Yeah, that works. You want me to go tell her? We gotta get started here. Oh, we're ready. Is it six o'clock? Okay, you ready? All right. Tell me when we're ready. We ready? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting of the Board of Directors for Tacoma Public Schools for June 28, 2018 to order. Please, will you please rise for the flag salute? Dr. Lyon, could you lead us in that tonight?
By saying the pledge of allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Pledge allegiance.
To fly out of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Assistant General Counsel, Jen Row, will you call the roll, please?
Yes. Vice President Viall?
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
Director Hines?
Here.
Director Lyon?
Here.
Should the record reflect that President Cobb's absence is excused?
Yes. Item four, adoption of the agenda. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda's adopted for a whole. Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Mr. Opel.
Thank you, Vice President Viall and members of the board. The awards for our schools just keep rolling in, and tonight's honor is a special one. U.S. News and World report researched and ranked more than 20,000 public high schools in all 50 states in the District of Columbia. The best of the best schools earned gold, silver, or bronze medals. Each school was graded on how students exceed expectations in their state based on the students' performance on state assessments. They were also graded on how underserved students perform against the state average. They looked at graduation rates and the preparation of students for college-level coursework. In the 2018 rankings, one of our schools earned national recognition. The Science and Math Institute ranked 42nd in Washington, which earned the school a silver medal from U.S. News and World Report. SAMH students excel on advanced placement coursework and exams. The AP participation rate at SAMH is 45 percent. And we all know that the school routinely graduates near 100 percent of its classes. So, please join me in honoring and welcoming SAMH's co-director, Liz Minks.
Thanks so much for this honor. We want to recognize the hard work of the teachers. We do a really nice job of hiring really great people that work tremendously hard for our students every single day. And also for the support of the Tacoma Public Schools in our innovative programming. We do things a little bit differently, and I think with that hard work, it's working out pretty well. Thanks.
Thank you. Would you like to come up?
Oh, sure.
All right. Item five-one, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to the Empowerment Center.
Yes.
Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas, please.
Thank you, Director Viall. Greetings Superintendent Santorno, directors. It's my pleasure, Amanda Scott Thomas, from the Community Partnership Office, to talk to you today about a Gold Star Award recipient for June. As you know, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for TPS students, family, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made the difference by doing what is best for kids. Today, we have the Empowerment Center, who have taken the responsibility to meet student fundamental needs. They were established in 2003, and they have committed to wage war on the ongoing fight against hunger and poverty through Winning the War Against Hunger and Poverty Project by providing full-course meals to families, senior citizens, our city's homeless, and also students and families in need at Tacoma Public Schools. The Empowerment Center was established, has established a long-lasting relationship with Mann Elementary School, and through this partnership, they feed over 30 families during Thanksgiving, Christmas, and non-school days. This has been accomplished through their distribution network and to external organization, their internal food bank, and their newly-established community distribution network. This program is operated 100 percent by volunteers from our community, who can take this work experience and training to gain employment. Not only does the Empowerment Center help our families with food, they provide resources to teens, single moms, and their children by offering projects and activities designed to build hope and dignity. The investment that our community partner has made in the lives of our students and families has undoubtedly made an impact on our students and their academic success by meeting their basic needs and providing a pathway of hope. Their contributions of giving and serving aligns with our district's values of believing that our students come first. Would you welcome me in celebrating the Empowerment Center? I'm gonna have them come up for some remarks.
To the board, we want to thank you for this opportunity. It's a pleasure and an honor for us to receive this award, but what's more rewarding is being part of the village for the children at Tacoma Public Schools. We've not only been able to provide meals for families at Mann, but in seven other Tacoma Public Schools, we provide holiday meals enough to feed them for five days. And we have a tremendously successful relationship with your staff. And so, we want to thank you for this recognition. We've been, we've been serving meals for Tacoma Public Schools students over the holidays for about seven years. So, this is a real honor and a privilege, and we just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you please come up? All right, moving on. Item six, superintendent's report. No report tonight. Thank you. Item seven, public hearing. Item seven-one, statement of intent to sell Camp Taylor property. This is the time that's been set aside for a public hearing on this matter. The district has determined that Camp Taylor property parcels, bear with me as I read these long numbers, 0020152000, 00220152011, and 002, pardon me, 002015020112, are not needed for district purposes in the foreseeable future and will not be required for the district's long-range planning of capital facilities. The district will take public testimony this evening regarding the potential sale. I'm gonna ask Superintendent Santorno to introduce one of our staff members to give us an overview. Yes, I'd like to invite Alicia to come forward and talk to us a little bit about the history of Camp Taylor.
Good evening. I'm happy to be coming to you tonight to speak a little bit about our, the plans that YMCA Seattle is proposing for our Camp Taylor space right now. This property has been surplus since February 2011, and after that point, there was also some work with the current caretaker that was there in discussion. So, it took a while before it went to market. But over the last few years, we've been having discussions with various entities, public entities, the state, YMCA Seattle, and it's been marketed to the public. And YMCA Seattle is here today to propose their purchase for this property, which is to expand Camp Coleman out there, which provides additional activities for students, which is part of why we're very excited about it. They'd be able to use the, and they'll be up here to talk about it in a little bit, but to be able to use the property to expand parking and camp space and eventually even expand to use the fields on the Camp Taylor space as well and make it part of the bigger Camp Coleman. If you have any questions at this time, I'd be happy to answer what I can, and then they also have a few words to say as well.
Or any questions by members of the board? Great. Thank you, Alicia. Superintendent, you have the names?
Well, I'd like to invite the Camp Coleman.
Yes. All right, go ahead. Okay, go ahead. I have number one is Gillian Escobar.
Hi, I'm Gillian Escobar. I'm our Director of Outdoor Environmental Education at Camp Coleman. We serve about 4,500 school students every year. About half of those are supported by scholarship to come out to Camp Coleman and participate in our program there. We teach outdoor science, and we are supporting their science learning standards that they are learning in their classroom. This provides an invaluable benefit to all of the students that come out, and I wanted to read a little bit of a letter of support from one of our teachers at Lister Elementary here in Tacoma. "Over the last five years, my students have benefited in a multitude of ways through attending the overnight science camp at Camp Coleman. Camp has provided exposure to nature, conservation, and an appreciation of the ecosystem we live in. Through camp, my students were afforded access to hands-on learning with trained naturalists, team-building that reinforced our social-emotional learning at school, and the ability to explore their own science interests and reflect on potential career paths. In addition, for many of our students who have adverse childhood experiences, this was an opportunity to be in an environment of low stress, support from a multitude of caring adults and teen mentors, and to experience a sense of calm and freedom. My students would never be able to afford to attend camp had it not been for the generosity of both the P'op tribe of Indians and the Greater Seattle YMCA. I encourage you to allow the YMCA to acquire Camp Taylor property so that they may continue to provide educational programs for our students and to potentially extend their reach into our communities, which so desperately need access to hands-on education like this." Thanks.
Second, I have Meredith Combre.
Hi there. My name is Meredith. I'm the Executive Director for Overnight Camping for the Seattle YMCA. In addition to our education programs, we serve about 9,000 people total at Camp Coleman every year in education programs with school groups during the school year, for family groups, as well as for summer campers. About 400 of our summer camp participants receive financial assistance to participate, and we work really hard to make sure that money is never a barrier to participation for any, any type of group, whether that's a school, or a family, or an individual child. We also, it would be really easy for me to tell you all the anecdotal evidence that I have about why I think camp is a really important part of a young person's educational experience, but there is some research that backs it up. So, I want to share with you what the University of Waterloo found to be the results of overnight camp experiences for young people. They found increased social integration and citizenship skills, an increased sense of environmental awareness and responsibility, increased self-confidence, so emotional intelligence, which we know is a skill that's very needed in this world, and improved attitudes towards physical activity, which we also know is really important. So, there's a great deal of evidence that shows that these are really a great complement to the education experiences that are happening in schools, and we want to make those available to more kids and protect the, our ability to do that really well, and this property will help us to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Steve Drury. I'm a board member with YMCA Camping Services. I've been a board member for 16 years. I'm also a resident of Tacoma almost 30 years. Both of my daughters graduated from stadium and did all of their education in the public system, which I think is fabulous, by the way, and I'm not saying it because of where I'm here. I've got results. They're both very successful. They've been very involved in YMCA camping, including one of them as a counselor at Camp Seymour and in family camp. So, there's a, always a question, I live in Tacoma, but I support the Seattle YMCA. There's a lot of interchange. I would request the board to approve this sale. It will give us additional space, as already been mentioned. It'll be safer for the children because we get the cars out of camp, so to speak. But the most important thing is Y Camp teaches very strong values. And I wish I had more than three minutes. I'd probably bore you again with, with specific stories that, that I've seen over the years and watched children go through. A lot of them scholarship children who've been very successful themselves. So, again, please support this sale, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Drury.
And so, that, that's from the YMCA Seattle. We will have a resolution at this point scheduled for you to consider on July 12.
Alicia, before you go continue, is there anyone, under the rules when we do public hearing, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this, this hearing this evening, on this item before us? I will note also that we received two very positive letters in favor of this, this sale to the Seattle YMCA. So, go ahead now, you can. Thank you. I don't hear it and seeing no one, then go ahead.
Currently, we're scheduled to bring a resolution to you on July 12. If you have any questions before that time, please let me know, and we'll make sure to get any information to you we can. If there's any questions now, I can answer.
I've got some questions.
Okay, go ahead.
So, you mentioned, so is this a camp that all ages from elementary schools through high school can attend? That's one question. Does it take whole classrooms? Go at a time? Another question, and I can, I'll wait for those responses. I have a couple of questions.
Most of the school groups that we serve with environmental education programs are in fifth and sixth grades, but for our overnight camp in the summer, kids starting in first grade and all the way through high school can participate, and for family camps, kids of any age, from zero to 99.
So, the ones that organized for, a whole class is of fifth grade from one school will go?
Sure, the entire fifth grade or sixth grade from a school will come all together.
Okay, do all of the elementary schools in Tacoma attend this camp? Or do some go to Camp Seymour?
Everyone doesn't come, and so, I'm...
It's a school-by-school, I believe.
Go ahead.
I was saying, I believe the fifth grade camp is a school-by-school decision, and they go to different locations. This is one option, summer camp, as well as some, I believe some do currently go to outdoor camp at Camp Coleman, but it's not just one location.
Okay. And the scholarships would make it available to anyone, essentially?
Yeah. We work with schools to help raise money, so we provide financial assistance for the amount that the school isn't able to cover, either by collecting fees from individual students or through a PTA. So, it's a little bit different for every school, depending on who is the champion in that school and how they're working to fund it.
Okay.
Generally, we offer financial assistance that is of a matching percentage to the number of children in the school who are low-income.
Okay. How much is it being sold for?
We can't disclose that yet till we get the resolution before us.
Okay.
Okay.
And where is the University of Waterloo?
Australia, I believe.
Canada?
Yeah, Canada.
Um, could you later just give me the citation for that study they have?
Okay.
Good.
There we go.
Okay, thanks.
Just to add on to that, for several years, the P'op tribe of Indians has contributed to the east-side schools for them to attend either Camp Seymour or Camp Coleman, or was it Islandwood? Yes. Yes, Islandwood up on Bainbridge Island. So, and so has the Forest Foundation number. Usually, if you want to go, you can find, the schools can get the money so that the kids can attend.
Some of those questions are, I mean, I'll just revolve around the, I believe that there are some elementary schools in Tacoma that don't send their kids to camp, and some of that I've been told is because of maybe the lack of a champion at the school, or parents, or some teachers. I think that this is an important item that should be available and maybe encouraged or somehow find a champion, whether it's a teacher, if there are no parents, to get students from every elementary school to these camps.
You had the pleasure of going last year. We've all done that. Was it fun?
It was wonderful, yeah. It was a chaperone. I wish it was a camp.
Okay, any more questions or comments for Alicia? Okay, thank you. I will now declare the hearing closed. Moving on, item nine, consent agenda. Chair would... Eight, we need to do that. Eight, I'm sorry. I want to get done tonight, I guess. Members of the public wishing to address the board. "School board members encourage public participation. Your civil and respectful input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, follow these steps. Please complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after public comment period has ended will not be considered a decision. The superintendent will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, time may be limited at the president's discretion." How many do we have? This looks like five. Okay, good. Thank you. Superintendent Santorno, if you would, please. Number one is Angel Morton, followed by Sally Perkins.
Good evening, members of the board. Angel Morton, President of Tacoma Education Association. And I just, I want to start off by saying that my heart is the heart of a kindergarten teacher. My joy is in working in the classroom and working with, with five- and six-year-olds to introduce them to school, to what fun it is to learn, to the great classroom community and the opportunities that exist. But in my current position, I'm coming from a different angle, and it's on me to advocate for the 2,400 people represented by Tacoma Education Association. So, that's what I'm doing here tonight. Recently, researchers from MIT have found that a livable wage in Pierce County for one adult supporting one child is $53,727 annually. As we bargain salaries in Tacoma, it's really concerning to me that we have so many office professionals, professional technicals, and certificated staff that do not make a living wage. Because of the McCleary money, we have an opportunity to start to address this problem. At the bargaining table recently, the negotiators for the district said that they're held to a 3.1 percent increase by law. I'm just wondering if they're working under the same law that the other districts around the state are, the other districts that have already been able to produce and agree on compensation salary levels that reflect raises of 12 to 20 percent. That's a lot more than 3.1 percent. After four meetings at the bargaining table, working on this McCleary money, it sends me to realize that it doesn't feel like the district values my members the way I would like them to be valued. I feel like I'm being told that anybody could do these jobs. When I've mentioned that great salary schedules are coming up in other districts, someone actually said, "People in Tacoma already signed their contracts. They're not going anywhere." So, we're your captives until June 2019? 2019? If that's the case, then we've got two, I've got two choices. As an organizer, I can get, I can work at the bargaining table to get my members the compensation so that they're paid what they're worth. And if that doesn't work, if I can't get my members up to a competitive wage, then my other alternative is to spend the month, next 11 months, working with them on getting their resumes up to date so that they can go to those districts that have taken this opportunity and made the most of it. The McCleary money that's coming into the district has been earmarked for salary increases. We're asking that you would respect the people that work for you and compensate them in a similar manner that you're going to vote on compensating the superintendent later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Sally Perkins, followed by, I think, I think it's Simi Omorvun. If I, if I mess that up, I'm sorry. I'll get it right to the mic. Thank you. Sally.
Good evening, Vice President Viall and Superintendent Santorno. My reason for testifying tonight is to support the concerns that President Cobb raised on June 14 about high-quality translation of key district documents, including the Student and Parent Handbook. It is essential to provide these key district documents in students' and families' home languages. In my observation, effective language access for students' families has seemed to be sort of an afterthought for the district. I'm hoping that that is going to change. Whether in ELL services or in provision of documents and information to families, the district needs to focus on making sure that students and families are welcomed and included through use of their own languages. There's nothing more isolating than not being able to communicate to others or to be able to understand what others are saying to you. Isolating these students and families through lack of attention to their language needs just isn't okay. A language element should be explicitly added to the district's Equity Lens, that's this document, to be sure that language needs are addressed proactively and fully. And the quality of language support needs to be improved. For documents with legal impact, such as the Student Handbook, where student rights and responsibilities are spelled out, you need to use high-quality legal translation services. I have brought tonight the American Bar Association's recommendations for how to select such services for legal documents. For documents that include key parent engagement information, the translators need to understand the goals of parent engagement and how best to communicate them in a welcoming and inclusive way. The ABA Guide has some excellent advice that is helpful generally and not just for legal language translation. This is not Google Translate, and, and I know you know, and I know, that it will never be Google Translate, nor is it Friends and Family Daily Social Conversation. It's high-quality, topic-sensitive translation, preferably by native speakers of the language in question. And it needs to cover all of TPS's family and student languages, not just the top five or the top 10. Yes, cost can be an issue, as can availability of skilled translators. But what I've learned in my work on equity is this, it's always a matter of priority. I would urge you to make language support a higher priority. Approximately 10 percent of the district's students are enrolled in ELL services. However, being exited from ELL does not necessarily mean that a student can decipher the legalisms of the Student Handbook, and it doesn't mean that the student's parents are exited too. It would be helpful to know how many families in the district need language support, independent of their student status in the ELL program. I would guess that it's higher than 10 percent. At a time when all three branches of our federal government are displaying hostility and cruelty to families who have come to our country from other places in the world, it's my fervent hope that Tacoma can be a beacon of support and hope for these families. In Tacoma, through making high-quality language support a reality for every student and family, we can make this part of America honorable again. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Simi.
Good evening. My name is Sima Omorvun, and I am a doctoral candidate in Community Health Behavior and Education, and I'm here to talk about the need for sexual health education in school. I'm very grateful that TPS provides the opportunity for sexual health education to be taught in school. Although there is a lot of data pertaining to the need for sexual health education, I'm just going to mention a few reasons. So, for more than four decades, sex education has been an important public health issue in the United States, and parental provided information cannot substitute the gaps for the need for formal information. From the Journal of Adolescent Health, public schools continue to play a vital role in ensuring the health, the health and well-being of elementary and secondary students, and the majority of them who need public schools, for as much as 14 years. Schools are able to address the physical, social, and emotional development of children, making them ideal sites for providing age and developmentally appropriate formal education. Ultimately, it's dire for everyone to advance the state of sexual education in schools and what we can do in the U.S. Thank you.
Janet Hubbard? Thank you. Followed by Chuck Meyer.
Followed by Chuck Meyer.
Hi, I'm not a public speaker, but I really feel this is important. I've worked within the Tacoma School District for 20, for 20 years total. Most recently, I've worked for six years at Bryant Montessori. I worked with fourth and fifth graders, with teachers and children I love. But the pay that I get, I'm at a P.A. 3 level, and my pay is really, really low, as are the other paras within my school. Many of the younger paras are leaving or going back to school to leave the job because the pay is just not sufficient to live on. If I didn't, didn't qualify for a home buying, for the home buyers, Tacoma home buyers, I would not be able to even pay my mortgage every month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Looking through some information off the OSPI website, on some, the budgets that we have for all the school districts in the state, looking at Seattle, Spokane, and Kent, I'm finding that Tacoma significantly underspends in teaching activities. For example, if we were Seattle, we would be spending $35 million a year more. Thirty-five million. That's every year. And I'm just curious as to why we consistently are falling behind these other districts. And that information is readily available, excuse me, from OSPI. And the second thing I wanted to say is, I was here two meetings ago asking about an email I sent to the board, and I had my email taken. I've still not gotten a response back. And that's my only comment.
Thank you.
That's the last, that's the last speaker.
Thank you. Moving on, consent agenda, item nine, Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is adopted, agenda is adopted 4-0. Item 10, policy matters, there are none. Item 11, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomaschools.org about finance. Thank you. Number, item 11, item 12, curriculum and instruction. Approval of the purchase of Middle School Science and Technology Concepts Third Edition kits.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of the upgraded Science and Technology Concepts Third Edition STC III kits for an estimated $534,000. Funding source, CNI BE funds.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 12-1, the approval of the purchase of Middle School Science and Technology Concepts Third Edition kits. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? I think we had a pretty thorough discussion last meeting. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Curriculum instruction, item 12-1 is adopted 4-0. Item 12-2, approval to adopt, hopefully I don't mess this up, Chang and Suie. I don't pronounce the T, I remember from Japanese. Suie instructional materials and student materials for Chinese and Japanese world language classes.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the adoption of Chang and Suie instructional materials and student materials for use in middle and high school classrooms. Funding source, CNI BE funds.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 12-3. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is, is adopted 12-3, or 4-0, sorry. All right, item 12-3, approval to adopt Family Life and Sexual Health Flash Instructional Materials and Student Materials for Sexual Education in grades 5 through 12.
The superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the adoption of Family Life and Sexual Health Flash Instructional Materials and Student Materials for Use in Sexual Education in Grades 5 through 12. Funding source, CNI BE funds.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 12-3. Is there any discussion or comments by members of the board? Mrs. Wenskill?
So I looked at most of it, and some of it is appropriate material on, you know, health-related curriculum. But some of it is a little bit dubious, like how to date. And I, I know that we don't have to teach everything in there, and I hope that some of those chapters get taken out, and that our parents know what this curriculum is, and can take their children out of anything that they don't feel is appropriate.
Marie, you want to address how we're going to go forward?
Great, thank you. So, thank you. I just wanted to remind the board that those binders are quite thick, and we have standards from the state. Not all of the curriculum in the binders necessarily aligns to the standards. You'll also remember that we have prioritized the standards just due to the amount of time we have to teach the content. So, once and if the curriculum is adopted, then we'll be putting together a team of educators, medical health professionals. We had an email correspondence today with Director Leon. He's going to help us by serving on that, as well as finding some other folks. And we will go through the curriculum, and it will be pared down considerably. And as all, as your board policy, I don't have the number right in front of me, but there is your policy that states parents will have access to review all curriculum prior to it being taught, and will have the option to have their student excluded with meaningful activities in its place. So, there will be considerable review, considerable paring down, and alignment to the standards.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the adoption of 12.3 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, curriculum is adopted 4-0. Item 13, business matters. Item 13-1, adoption of resolution, excuse me, 2041, bank signatures.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2041, and approve the updated list of the employees who can authorize transactions on these accounts, and authorize the superintendent and/or designate to approve the plan.
I move approval, second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, adoption, resolution is adopted 4-0. Item 12, item 13-2, adoption of Resolution 2042, new bank account.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2042, and approve the request for a new bank account, and list of them, and the list of the employees who can authorize transactions on this account, and authorize the superintendent and/or designate to approve the plan.
Move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 13-2. Is there any questions or comments by the members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, resolution is adopted 4-0. Item 13-3, approval of three-year contract for telecommunication services.
The Chief, the superintendent, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract for telecommunication services for the district as needed. And I've asked our Chief Information Officer to give you a little background. Thanks.
I'll move approval.
Why don't we move it and get it before us? Is there a motion to approve? Okay, I didn't hear a second. Oh, thank you, good. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, now Ed, go ahead.
So this is a renewal for the district telephone service, for dial tone in and out of the district, enhanced 911 service, Sonatrol, and the red emergency phones.
Thank you. Any questions of, of Ed, members of the board?
I like those red phones.
Kind of hearkens back to the president's, the red phone.
I'd like to buy one. Where can you get one?
All right, okay. There are no questions or comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing no opposition. Item 13-3 is approved 4-0. Item 13-4, award pupil transportation contract.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors award the contract for pupil transportation to First Student, Inc., and authorize the superintendent to award and sign a contract for the period of September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2023.
I move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 13-4. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Director Wenskill?
So, thank you for the information that we received. And I like the fact that we can modify this in the next five years. And one of the things we want to do is look at bell schedules for high school, and, which is being done throughout the state by other districts. Seattle changed theirs, Issaquah, other districts are looking at it. And I think it's timely, and I think it's good to pursue some other options, but, and it's even a little bit less costly than it has been. So, thank you.
I think Superintendent Santorno had a comment. Do you have one?
No, I'm sorry. I don't have one.
You don't, okay.
No, sorry.
Any other comments?
I would just echo Director Wenskill's comments on the bell schedule. I'm also interested in exploring what that could look like.
I would, I would ask that we take a long, hard look at that and look at Seattle's experience. I know they took a whole year or two before they arrived at it. One of my concerns is, do we have enough buses to do that without having little kids out in the dark at 7:00 in the morning, and so on? So, I think it's a good idea, but I want to make sure that, that was one, that's why Seattle shifted to having Metro doing like we have, and we have, so that we have an opportunity to really do this right. I think it's a good idea. I remember getting my teenagers, or trying to get my teenagers out of bed to zero-hour classes and a few other things, so. But I would ask that we have asked the superintendent to look at, really studying this in depth, and we have a study session to outline the parameters and give us an idea where we are with, with peer transit. I think it's time to put together a hybrid system for us. So, anyway, thank you.
Ms. Medina has done a good job already of getting that set along with Mr. Gemmell, they've, and the Transportation Director, Mr. Fletcher. So I'm confident that they're going to be able to put together a study session that will help you really examine the issues and talk about what it looks like, and propose a schedule that we can, you know, do this in a thorough and thoughtful way. So, we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. Yeah, kind of. Thank you, Roslin and staff, for, for all your hard work. Are there any further questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 4-0, resolution is adopted. Item 14, other business. Item 14-1, approval of acceptance grant from the Pualup Tribe of Indians Charity Trust Board to support the Tacoma Public Schools Indian Education Program.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Executive Director of ELL, recommends that the Board of Directors accept this grant award in the amount of $75,000, and approve expenditures in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Pualup Tribe of Indians Charity Trust Board.
I'll move approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt item 14-1. I'd like to make a couple of comments. For about the last five years quietly, the tribe has been giving us anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 or more to fund our Indian education activities. And I want to basically thank the Chair of that committee, who's someone that I've had the pleasure to work with many years ago, David Duenis, and also the Vice Chair, James Miles, who are really committed to education. And this amount was a significant increase, and they are, you know, they've become a major partner of ours in terms of helping us not only with things like this, but also very quietly over the past funding. For many years, they have funded camp at Lister Elementary. And so they have been a wonderful partner for us. And I just want to thank them for their generosity and their caring, and their commitment to supporting us. When we do our Indian Ed graduation, they are always there. David Bean also has been a council member, Bean has been a very big driver of partnership with Tacoma Public Schools, as he is a graduate of TPS. Anyway, thank you, tribe, for being a partner of ours. And we continue looking forward to working with you on a long-term basis, and making sure that those native children who come through Tacoma Public Schools receive the same world-class education that other kids do. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries 4-0. Item 14-2, pardon me, allergy season today. Approval of Addendum Number 2 to Contract with Services for Fairfax Hospital, D/BA Northwest School of Innovative Learning.
The Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approves the addendum to the original agreement with Fairfax Hospital, ending August 31, 2018.
I'll move approval, second.
Excuse me, it's been moved and seconded to adopt item 14-2. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is adopted 4-0. Item 14-3, approval of increase for paratransit services for alternative transportation McKinley-Vento students.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the increase of $200,000 for paratransit services for the purpose of alternative student transportation services for the 1718 school year.
I'll move approval, second.
Any questions or comments? I have one, a question, it's, I think it, it's, is this increase primarily due to a change in the McKinley-Vento law?
It is not a recent change in McKinley-Vento law, although the McKinley-Vento law has put us in a position where we have a much higher unfunded mandate than we've had in the past. And we're transporting students farther and more often, more frequently. And so, and we're additionally, we're having to transport foster students as well now, where we didn't have to in the past. And so the costs have increased significantly. I would also add that we just completed an RFP for these specific types of services. So you'll see an agenda item for the 1819 year coming soon that should result in more cost benefits to us.
Okay, thank you. That's why I want a clarification, that this just all of a sudden didn't bump up in some additional responsibilities that the federal government has refused to give us dollars to take care of, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Director Hines? Sorry, Director Wenskill.
So I would, I have heard some cases of students moving away, you know, far away, at parents, for several years, and then being transported. And what is the expectation? Is it the end of their career, the end of like elementary, middle school, high school? You know, I don't really even know what the expectation of McKinley-Vento. I mean, I understand, you know, continuity, but do they expect us to do it for their entire educational career?
As long as they're homeless, as long as they meet the criteria for homelessness, yes.
But do we really get at whether they are homeless, or whether they've just relocated? That's, I guess, my issue. Because I, I do think it's very disruptive for students to have to leave their school mid-year. But if they're living in a completely different community, and maybe they're not, do we follow up to see if they're really homeless?
Yes, there's criteria that they have to meet. I don't know, Malik, did you want to add? Go ahead.
Yeah, so there's, there's a definition under the law for housing instability. So that can look different for different families. It's not the case that once they get into McKinley-Vento, that they just sort of stay from year to year. There's a review that's done every year to determine if the student continues to meet the criteria. If they do continue to meet the criteria, then what Roslin was talking about, about the students staying in their home school, if that's what the best interest is, that's the rule that governs it, would require us, if the best interest determination is that they continue to go to that former school, that's what would require us to do that year after year. But it's a yearly analysis.
Oh, good, thank you. Director Hines?
I would be interested in a superintendent's report or a presentation on the status of McKinley-Vento. It seems like it's been a couple of years since we've had one publicly. And my recollection is the last time we had over 1,800 students that have been identified. And given the economy, and just the challenges that kids and families are facing, I think that would be helpful to better understand how the issue is impacting Tacoma Public Schools.
Okay. You stole my thunder. You stole my thunder. Great minds think alike. I also know that just from my time on the rescue mission board a number of years ago, that McKinley-Vento classifies homeless in a different way than when they go out and count. That if a child or a family is not in permanent housing, even though they're in, say for example, Tyler, Tyler Street or Tyler Square, or in Adams Street, even though they're in shelter and they're in transition housing, they're still regarded as homeless. So that creates a much larger population that McKinley-Vento serves. And am I correct in that, still the same definition?
Yes, that's correct. Because remember, it's not just about whether you're homeless in the sense of--
Not having permanent housing.
It's housing instability. So even a student perhaps that could live with a friend of a family or an extended relative, under certain circumstances, can be qualified as homeless for some period of time under McKinley-Vento.
Because I had someone say to me, well, how come the school district's numbers are larger when you look at the eighteen-hundred to two-thousand kids than what the community looks like when you have a, have a count? And I, and I thought I was correct. And I thought, well, if I'm not, I know who I can, you know, go talk to. And I said, it's because under the Federal Act Regarding Children in Homelessness, that definition basically requires a permanent housing situation at the end.
Yeah.
And until they are there, then they're going to be counted as homeless. So that's why our numbers are, don't sometimes match. Thank you, Malik. Okay. All right. Need to adopt this. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries four-oh. Item fourteen-three is adopted. Item fourteen-four, approval of inter-local agreement with Columbia Virtual Academy for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year.
The superintendent on behalf of the Director of Data Assessment Research Team, the DART team, recommends that the board of directors approve the inter-local agreement TSD nineteen-oh-two-four with Columbia Virtual Academy for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. And basically what this is, is we have students that are enrolled in the Columbia Virtual Academy, and they need to take some of our regular student assessment tests. And so they, wherever you enroll, you take the test where you are. So we have Tacoma students that we have to give the test to. So that's what this inter-local is about, is the testing.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions by more members of the board or comments?
I have a question about this virtual academy. Because in the beginning, students were real, real successful at it. They weren't doing their work in a timely manner. Are we having better results with people doing online learning?
Are you talking about just about hours? Because this Columbia isn't associated with Tacoma Public Schools at all.
Okay, so they're just using our services.
They're a private, yeah, they're a private company.
Okay, I didn't know whether, some of our students went and used their services.
Well, we may have Tacoma students that are using their services, but they're, it's like going to a private school.
Mm-hmm. No, I do know people who've taken these, but I know that they haven't been all that successful. So I just didn't know if we got feedback, you know, as to--
No.
Okay.
We haven't gotten any.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries four-oh. Item fourteen-four is adopted. Item fourteen-five, approval of inter-local agreement with Derenger School District for two thousand eighteen-nineteen.
The superintendent on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services requests the board directors authorize the superintendent to enter into local, inter-local agreements with the Derenger School Districts for the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year. Funding source, special education.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments by members of the board? Hearing none. All those in favor of adoption signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion is carried four-oh. I'm going to ask Director Winskill on this next item to take the gavel, because a member of my family is a senior person with Corsmo Construction. So I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, we move on to the next item, fourteen point six, approval of maxi, mini-maximum alternative construction cost. So, could I have a reading of this, please?
Mr. Aldrich?
The Executive Director of Planning and Construction, on behalf of the Chief Operating Officer, recommends that the board of directors approve the mini, mini-mac amendment number one, which states that the maximum allowable construction cost for the first two bid packages on the Grant Center for the Expressive Arts Replacement Project and authorize the Superintendent of Designey to sign said mini-mac amendment number one in the amount of four million five hundred and twenty-four thousand, five, excuse me, four, four fifty-three, excluding sales tax. Funding sources capital project bonds, approved by the voters in February twelfth, two thousand thirteen.
Okay. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, three-zero. And we'll let the minutes reflect that Director Vial stepped out to not abstain, I guess, would be the proper terminology. Okay, so, is she coming back? Just in time to approve the superintendent's contract?
Okay, so, did we already move to that, or are we going to--
No, I was gonna let you do it.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Item fourteen-seven, approval of superintendent's contract. The President of the Board, my, the Vice President of the Board in this case, recommends ratification of the attached contract with Superintendent Carlos Santorino to reflect a three-year period of employment commencing on July one, two thousand eighteen, and expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Motion to adopt? I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I would, I would like to make a few comments to start, and then I think we can just go down the, down the list. I think one of the things about this contract, that it's very significant to note, that Superintendent Santorino is asking that her contract be renewed with the same provisions of last year, recognizing the fact that this school district is in a rather precarious financial situation right now. I think it's also important to note that around the country, superintendents with Carlos credentials and expertise have asked for pay increases and benefits and have received them. And I particularly appreciate her understanding and also her commitment to our, our school district and to our kids. Additionally, I think the thing that, that super, and as we did evaluation, that Superintendent Santorino continues to commit to our students and honors our commitment as a board made seven years ago to continuous academic achievement. Our highest priority is the achievement of our kids, and so is hers. And I think not all of us know that. She has been relentless in focusing on systems and strategies to increase learning. This year's continued focus on literacy framework has paid off. Our English language scores have shown growth in almost every grade level. We finally got there. And she has promised to redouble those efforts in mathematics where we aren't reaching those goals. I think the other thing is, we, as a board, when we did our strategic plan, committed to creative and innovative partnerships. And her work in our community, and not only in our community, but throughout the United States with work with the Wallace Foundation, has created some partnerships that have been amazing, amazing benefit to our kids and will continue to be so, and to our community. Her work to create, for example, the latest one, and I know that, I'm sure Director Leon is aware of this, is the effective medical pathways now for our students that will open many opportunities to looking at students who want to enter into the medical field. The other thing, if we can just look, we have, what, over two hundred partnerships? Every one of these contributes to the academic achievement of our children, not only to their social and emotional growth. And it is why this school district is looked to across the country. The other thing, finally, I, I particularly, in my time here, have appreciated the transparency that Superintendent Carlos Santorino brings to the job and to our strong board relationship. When I go to many meetings, and I've been active in the Council of Urban Boards of Education, I talk about the relationship this board has with our superintendent. We have no secrets. And many boards, they'll say, well, how does your, does your superintendent really tell you everything? I said, yeah, we talk about the ugly first, then we go to the, to the good, and then we go to the great. And I think that that is one of the reasons that this school district has done what it has done over the last seven years. When you tell people where we were in two thousand eleven with a fifty-four percent graduation rate, and we're last year at eighty-six point one and eighty-nine for a five-year graduation rate, they look and they think twice. And in nineteen, in two thousand sixteen, when we were named National School Board of the Year, they were really amazed by how such a diverse school district as we are have moved all of their needles and moved them significantly. So it is, you know, for me, I think this is something that, you know, we are so very, very fortunate. I grew up in this city. I'm a graduate of Tacoma Public Schools. We have had one other superintendent who took this district to greatness, as Carla had, and that was the late Dr. Angelo Giadroni. And we are fortunate to have someone with the qualities, the ability to relate not only to internal things in, within the district, but also to our community. Carla, I don't know how she does it. She's in, she's meeting with the community. Every time I hear someone say, wow, she's amazing. So anyway, it is with, with a great privilege that I am going to vote yes for this contract. Thank you. Anyone else? Director Hines?
Thank you, Vice President Vial. I just like to state that when I first came on the board, I had a lot of people tell me, I hope you're going to hold that superintendent accountable. And it was presented in a way that was adversarial and combative. And that doesn't align with my values and my philosophy on leadership. And what I've appreciated is that we've had tough conversations. I think we've literally met every other week for the almost seven years that I've been on the board. You're willing to listen and consider. And we've had some challenging issues that we faced. We will continue to have challenging issues. But I think your professionalism and your deep commitment to the students, and your ability to be publicly accountable, it's a thankless job. You're always going to have somebody or some group mad at you. But you've always provided me with data and logic and the justification for your recommendations and the decisions that you've made. And I think that that is all that anyone can expect from a superintendent of a district this size. So I appreciate your leadership, and I know we've got much work to do. And you've already begun to think about what the next few years look like. And I look forward to doing that work along your side.
Thank you, Scott.
Any further comments? Hearing none. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor approving Superintendent Santorino's contract signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Is adopted. Superintendent Santorino, thank you for your work, and we look forward to the next year. Would you like to comment?
Yeah. I just want, I'm not going to get emotional. This is the end of my seventh year. There's a lot of my colleagues that can't say that. So I want you to know how much I appreciate your commitment to me. We haven't always agreed. We've, sometimes I've been on different pages, but I really appreciate the support that you've given me over, you know, these years. You've, you're always there. You work effectively with each other. You do your homework, and you're always ready to do the next step for students. You've been courageous all the way through. We have some policies and that are in this district that aren't in any other district across the country because they take courage and guts, and they take a stand that you have to make on behalf of kids and not for adults. And so I just want you to know how much I appreciate that. I love this place. I'm committed to it. I mean, I totally know that there's a lot of things that I need to learn to do to grow. I want to make sure I take the time to appreciate my team. These are the greatest people that you could possibly work with. And I'm totally amazed about the things they accomplish and what they get done on a daily basis. I wish you could watch our leadership team come together and work because they do take this work so seriously. And all of our new folks that have come over the last few years, or in the last time, Ed, Chris Williams, Morris, the one comment I always get from them, because I ask, so how are we doing? How's this compare, you know, to Chicago, to Austin, and to Reno, Nevada? And they always say that we've got a place that is incredible. They can't believe our commitment to students first. That we always talk about kids, and we put kids first in every policy that we talk about. It's that conversation about children. So, thank you. That's because of you and your courage in reinforcing that. So thank you. I look forward to really making a difference in math and to continuing our growth in English, English, English arts, and meeting and adapting the challenges. I appreciate our public and the way they come to the table. Sally, we're working on getting those things translated. We do listen, we do hear, and we do work. And it is important to us. It's not acceptable for a member of the public to come and have an email and not get an answer. Darn it, he left. I wanted to make sure we got it. But we take that seriously. So thank you very much. I love this work. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, item fifteen, report to the board, a budget overview. Getting back to reality.
Like wah-wah.
But you know how much I love those.
I know. Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I would like to provide you just a brief overview of where we are at in the process. And I really wish I could be here with a little bit more progress in where we're at with the process. So I'm, I'm going to provide you with some information around where we're at in implementing things, what we're implementing, and then what's upcoming for the next several months. As you know, we have to adopt a budget by August thirty-first, and so the expectation is that we will be complete at the board meeting in the end of August. It's been an incredibly challenging year to be able to process through all of this. And it really, the entire environment is a difficult one to navigate. Some highlights of some of the implementing legislative impacts that we're working forward with now. Salaries, salary funding in general. We are currently in negotiations with several of our bargaining groups. And we are, the state has come up with some new legislative requirements for both a minimum salary for teachers, as well as some fence posts that we have to live within. And so we are currently working with our certificated staff to develop a new salary schedule that meets the needs of the legislation. And I think that it is important to note that we did lose a considerable amount of levy. And while we're trying to shift things around, salaries is one of the things that becomes a sticky situation and a difficult conversation to have. With the K-three compliance delay, which we're actually very fortunate in this district, we were not in compliance. We were short seventy-seven FTE to be in full compliance with the K-three class size requirements of seventeen to one across the district. We are going to be working towards meeting that goal next year. Next year, if we do not meet the goal, we will have a financial ramification that will reduce our apportionment dollars. And so we are adding twenty K-three teachers in the eighteen-nineteen year as one starting point. And a second starting point is we are working to identify teachers that we currently have in the system that we have not been coding appropriately. Teachers that are in categorical programs that aren't counting towards the formula. And so we're able to shift those teachers to the appropriate coding so that we are able to consider them. We received a twelve-million-dollar, one-time levy hold harmless from the legislature. That was something that our legislators fought for as a point of contention in trying to get through the final legislative days. They're temporary funds, they're not permanent. We do not get to count them in future years. And we have to be careful about the expenditures that we build into that because we will no longer have those funds available to us in future years to, so if we build ongoing expenditures associated with those revenues, then we are going to be in a position where we're going to have to make cuts associated with those. We're required to identify our enrichment levy eligible expenditures. And so what that means is that we are working with the finance department and the budget team right now to pretty much go through every single expenditure in the district and say whether it belongs in the basic education general fund program, or whether it belongs in the levy general fund program. And that is not an easy feat. Then what we have to do is actually code it, accounting codes. We have to develop accounting codes so that we can physically identify it for the state auditor's office when they come out and look at our budget. And we are working on annual average FTE requirements. We are going to be receiving, excuse me, we are going to be required to comply with a new number of minutes that students are attending per day. We're currently in compliance for the elementary group-- We're currently in compliance for the elementary group, but the secondary group is just a little bit shy in several of our schools. They're going to be required to go from having 1,500 minutes per week to 1,665 minutes per week. And the modifications are relatively minor. There's a few schools where it's a little more impactful, like our school of the arts programs, where we're trying to identify whether we're in compliance or not. But Baker, Baker Middle School was one. It was, I don't know, maybe seven minutes that was off during the week, so we had to add seven minutes to the week. That's one challenge. Another challenge is that with the lost levy expenditures that we had, excuse me, we have to shift to our new categorical funds. So we're receiving a considerable amount of categorical funds. They're all restricted in the uses. And as we're rifling through levy expenditures and trying to identify what goes into the new levy, we're also saying where else could this be placed? As some examples for our LAP dollars, learning assistance program, and Title I dollars, we're now going to use those dollars to cover family liaisons and social workers, and we're going to use them to cover professional development and summer school costs. Highly capable can fund our AP textbook purchases and other supplemental materials for our highly capable students. Career and technical education can fund our ROTC program, Hilltop Artist, Community-Based Transition Programs. And so we're shifting all of those funds out of the levy into those categorical programs. And then an additional component is transportation. We have the crossing guards, and so we're shifting them as well. It's an eligible expense in the transportation category. We've shown this slide a couple of times before, but I feel like it's relevant in the conversation that we're having. What we're seeing is that we have a bump in the 1819 year. We'll have, we'll have more dollars in state dollars. Those dollars will more likely come in in categorical components than they will in free spending, basic education dollars. And our levy dollars will decrease. And then our levy dollars continue to decrease next year. We will not see some considerable increases in either the regular apportionment or in the categorical apportionment. And so what that means is that we will have a gap. Gaps mean reductions. That's what we're focusing on in the 1920 year as our biggest issue. And that's where we're going to the legislature and saying two things. One, we don't know that you have funded us appropriately, and we're not sure that the prototypical funding that you provide us is adequate. And two, we have been approved by our voters to have a $70 million levy. We're only eligible to collect up to $38 million. We're losing flexibility because we have lost levy dollar revenues and gaining strings attached to dollars with the dedicated revenues. What this slide shows is a little bit of detail to that last slide. If you look at the 1819 year, we'll have $380 million of local and, excuse me, levy dollars and state dollars. And then that will decline down to 362 in the 1920 year. And we'll just come up slightly in the 1920, 21 year. Our maintenance level expenditures without salary negotiations will outpace this. Just people rolling up on the salary schedule alone will outpace the ability for us to maintain within the current revenues that we have projected. And if you see the red line here, we go from a 39% of flexible funds down to 21% flexible funds. So I talked a little bit about the key issues with the levy. We lost 54% of our levy over the two-year period that they'll be ratcheting our levy down. And they've created inequity, in our opinion, in the two-tiered levy structure. This is in evidence of that, a chart of evidence associated with that. Those districts that are highlighted in orange are eligible to collect more than $2,000 per student. Tacoma is limited to $1,297 roughly. This is an estimate still. Please don't take that as law. But the, the district will be provided with local effort assistance, which is a subsidy for our property poor area. We'll be able to collect up to $1,500 with the state dollars associated with these levy dollars. But you can see that our free and reduced lunch rate is 58%, and the district that's far outpacing these other districts that are able to collect quite a bit more than what we're eligible to collect. And I mean, Yakima, I don't know how they're going to do it. And so that's the inequity that we want to talk to our legislators about moving forward in addition to the fact that we've been approved by our voters to have a $70 million levy. In the situation where we're able to collect the higher levy value, we will be in a much different position. So the unknown is really a difficult thing to plan for. Some of the additional development challenges that we face working on our budget this year. We'll have nearly a million dollars of expense per year for the Paid Family Sick Leave Act that was passed, Senate Bill 5975. And we will have to start paying that tax January of 2019, which is in the middle of the next budget cycle. And it's not anything that the state has provided us any funding for, so technically it's an unbundled mandate. Additionally, we're being asked to do some pretty significant accounting changes over the next two years. This year, I said we have to identify levy expenditures, but next year, we will have to change our accounting structure to more closely align with the federal accounting structure, NCES structure. When we started looking at all of the changes...
Could you say what DES is?
NCES.
SS, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I don't know what NCES means. It's a federal...
Oh, I know. Oh, national. I do know it. Yeah.
The federal coding structure for how you code expenditures.
It's a coding for stuff. Okay.
That's right. I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
And when we started looking at all the expenditures that were moving around, essentially, we are going to be touching almost $150 million of this budget to put it into a new place or code it differently, or change or adjust coding to it. And so that's a tremendous effort. We'll also be required to submit a four-year budget summary. This is not a detailed budget, like what we're doing with our regular 1819 budget. More of a high-level budget or similar to what the state does. I'm not sure how much meaning the state's budgets have when we're looking at a four-year cycle, but we'll be required to comply with that as well. We do have salary limitations. The Senate Bill 6362 outlined a cap from 3.1% for any salary adjusted for the 1819 year after July of 2017. There's some other qualifications that in, or allow you to go a little bit beyond that. The only one of those that doesn't apply to us would be we are not below the state average. So we can increase for step increases. We can increase for the addition of staff if we don't have those current staff. And we can increase, oh, there was another one. I can't remember off the top of my head. I apologize. But we're not allowed, we are not eligible for one of those which other districts are using, which is if you're below the state average of salaries, then you can bring your teachers up to that state average. We don't qualify for that. Our teachers, our staff mix is already beyond what the state average is, so we're already having a more experienced or seasoned staff. We're also making indirect rate increases. So where we're seeing these new categorical funds come in, we're taking a higher percentage for the district to be able to offset some of those costs. And we are doing, going to be eliminating local support for a number of programs because they'll now have funding to be able to support themselves. Our fund balance plan for the future, we're looking at eliminating our reliance of $5 million. We have been outspending our means for the last several years. We will stop using $5 million of one-time funds, and we will build those expenditures into the budget. Our intent is potentially to try and do a repayment to the fund balance. We're hoping that we may be able to do a little bit of repayment to the fund balance. It'll help offset a future year's budget decline. And then we'll also be utilizing fund balance for curriculum instruction as well as carryover of categorical dollars. That is a typical standard practice. Those dollars are reserved at the end of the last year because they were underspent in those categories, and then we just provide them the ability to expend them in the next year. So when we talk about upcoming timeline and next steps, we'll be, we'll have a draft budget. It probably will not be fully balanced on July 10th, but we're going to get our best effort to do that. We're only required by OSPI to put something out there. So it just has to be one fund. We'll probably do the transportation vehicle fund because we can do that. July 12th, we'll have our first of two budget hearings. So there'll be a hearing, a presentation followed by a hearing. At that presentation, we should have a rough balanced budget to prevent, present to you that gives you an understanding of what we're changing, adding, moving. And then we will go for budget adoption on August 28th, which will include both the regular budget for 1819 as well as the four-year budget summary. And then in fall, we will begin the budgeting by priorities process. Questions?
I, I just have one on that accounting stuff.
Yes.
Having a little experience in that arena when you get shifts and stuff. Is that going to require us to have additional software?
It won't require, it require us to have additional software, but we will have to do sort of a mini reimplementation of our accounting structure and, and the current GL structure that we're managing. By the way, Kristen is in the back of the room, and she's sent me, NCES stands for National Center for Education Statistics. So what that does is allow us to align with other, other districts across the country that use the NCES methodology so that you can more closely identify how well you're spending in relationship to others. And I had another thought, but I can't remember it, Karen. Director Viall, excuse me.
That's okay. I just know when we shifted accounting structures back at the state level, that was a real not fun, fun game that we had to do.
Yeah, the, the structures, the structures don't change the general accounting unit. It's just adding some additional qualifiers to it.
Okay. I'm gonna, the thing that, obviously, that, you know, I am really, really concerned about is that $50 million hole that could be there. And we have been in conversations, I have, Charlie Brown has, Carla has, you have, with some of the legislative staff and with our legislators. And every time I see Senator Conway, who was the one that got the 12 million through the Senate for us, he begins the conversation with, I'm not going to tolerate this impact on Tacoma Public Schools. Same thing with Representative Jenkins and Representative Fie. So I guess what we're going to have to do is get a full court press with these other school districts across the state that are impacted like we are. And that, I know what the argument's going to be. Well, what happens if you fail levy? Well, you fail levy. That's always been there. And that's a whole different issue. I personally feel that this is a civil rights issue, the way that this has come out. That this is an equity issue. If you look at the districts that are impacted, they are high minority districts. They are high poverty districts. And I know there's a couple constitutional lawyers in this state that would love to go file a equal protection of the laws lawsuit under the 14th Amendment. So, I mean, that may be a fallback position for us, but I guess our, our thing is, is to keep just saying this is a reality. And I, I think some people don't realize that it is. And having gone through personally twice, two major budget realignments when I was at the city. Main one was through the Boeing crisis, in which we cut almost half of the state budget. That was not fun. And for all of us up here, it's going to be the hardest thing we've ever had to do in our lives. I can guarantee you that. It will not be easy because then you have to start really looking at, Governor gave us, we won't cut, we won't hurt, we won't hurt education, and we won't hurt poor people. And that was a real tough task, and we did a fairly decent job of it. But there were a lot of programs and a lot of things that added value to the quality of life that we here in this state enjoy that got whacked, and it took a long time to get them back. So I guess my comments are, for those people who don't think that $50 million hole is a reality, it is. And we gotta put our, all of our collective heads together, and all of us work, go to Olympia, not just us. Those of you sitting out there and tell them, give us our 78, $77 million levy back because our voters said that. They want it. They're willing to pay it. And our school district has always had that support. And then to get the other districts who are also impacted and just let them know that we're not going to tolerate this. And this is an election year. And I think you will find some of our representatives much more willing to sit and listen, not just our local ones, but other ones whose districts are also impacted by this, who do not want to look like they rewarded those districts that have low might, low diversity and low poverty. The rich got richer, quite frankly, and the poor got poor, and that's what happened. And I think that's where we need to be. And I don't think there's any questions you can ask from my standpoint anymore because I totally understand where we are. It frankly scares the bejeebers out of me. Director Heinz?
Just a clarifying question. Thank you for your presentation. On Slide 8, when it says the cap of 3.1%, was that in House Bill 2242?
I, I'm looking at Senate Bill 6362, which modified 2242. So I'm not sure if 2242 initially had it in there or if it was just for certain areas. And 6362 specifically outlines that for certificated, it's Section 208. For classified, it's Section 207. And for administrative, it is Section 204.
Good. Thank you.
Director Heinz, Scott. Okay, so at first I was, so we have a year to really itemize those issues which we think are enrichment, correct? Or we, we don't have to do it by September.
We have to identify that we have a sub-fund and that we know what we think we're putting into our levy in September of this year. We do not have to report that off to the state in any particular way. We just have to have the ability that when SAO comes out, that they can see, when state auditor's office comes to review our books, they've been charged with making sure that we have that sub-fund available. And that's really the only box we have to check. So we're making a first blush in the budget team. Actually, that's, we started with Josh and with the superintendent and the deputy superintendent. We've started pulling those expenses out. We're trying to identify things that we think are the eligible expenditures, and then we will roll that back up for approval and verification. It, it's sensitive, right? We have to make sure that we're putting the right things in there. We have to make sure that these are eligible expenses that we're putting in there. And so that is the process that we intend to use. We have to have something available to, as we, as we complete our budget. It doesn't have to be anything, it doesn't have to be the final word on it. We'll be able to move things in and out of there as we feel fit, as we see fit this year.
Okay, so when I see the increase in categorical programs, and you're talking about LAP and family liaisons.
Yes.
So have we been paying family liaisons out of LAP money this past year?
We've paid for some. But we have paid for some of them out of, most of them are paid for out of the basic education, out of basic education apportionment.
Okay, so are we looking at increasing?
No.
Because that, that's a fairly steep price. Isn't that well over a million dollars?
Between all of them, yes.
And, you know, that wasn't really brought forward to us as an item, you know, itemized out as a budget item until we heard about it after the fact. So what happens to LAP? What suffers in the LAP budget?
We received additional revenues, and so we're moving those expenditures that we currently have in the budget into those new revenues.
So I guess that, my question would really be to the superintendent, this is for a later time, but how are we using these LAP dollars, and do they impact students like they're supposed to from the state, you know, or, you know, these family liaison people? So this is just something for a later discussion.
Okay.
You know, I don't even know the answer to that right now. But I, for one, as a board member, would be really interested to know any increases we're going to have this year itemized out at our next, at our budget, next meeting.
For 1819?
Yeah, coming up, you know. So we're, we're looking at increasing this or decreasing that. We've done that in the past, but not for a while, and I'd really be interested in that as a budget line item, saying we want to spend more money here, we want to spend less money here. And, and I think, I don't know if other people on this board agree, but in the future, since we're uncertain in a year of what our finances are going to be, I would like to have a justification for addition of any new administrators or people having their job description changed, going from like director to executive director or whatever, which impacts their salary and impacts the budget. So I would like to know that, you know, have a little star in our personnel. This is a new item, a new position, a more costly position going forward, so we kind of know what's happening.
And indicate whether it's from a grant or...
Right, yes. And that could be, yeah, that could be too. And then when your asks go, that we, you know, let go of the person if the grant has gone to, put them in a different position. Okay, thanks.
I, I do have one follow-up, and that comes back to federal funds and federal grants. If we start cutting money, are we going to get into maintenance of efforts issues with grants?
We are closely watching our maintenance of effort as we're moving things around and shifting, and it is right at the forefront of our minds.
I figured it was.
So it's a possibility if we're not careful.
One, one comment I'd like to make on our budget. Our budget is aligned to our strategic plan and to our benchmarks as to how we set our priorities for, for funding. So I assume that we will see that budgeting, in the budgeting by priorities budget that you will bring to us, correct?
Um, I don't know that I will be able to identify that at this July twelfth, uh, meeting.
I'm not talking about July twelfth, but in the final-
Sure, certainly.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, absolutely.
Great, and I, I think that's what's allowed us to, I know it certainly is a great tool for keeping us on track when we do have to start making reductions, certainly did that. Sally Perkins remembers, we did that at the state. We had priorities set for us and also when city went through some major reductions back in the early nineties and it keeps us on track at really looking at, these are our priorities that we set, these are where we're, our funding should go and not get us off in all different, all different tangents, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any more ques- Director Hines?
Thank you, I had one more follow-up. Actually, I guess there are two questions, same topic. Uh, I, I'd be interested in evidence. So as you bring the budget before us, I understand if there's a tight turnaround on this initial budget, but as we're going to have budget hearings, I would be interested in the evidence. So what are we getting? What's the return on investment for these different positions? So, um, I agree the alignment with the strategic plan and the benchmarks and then, and then what outcomes are being achieved? Because perhaps where we're making some investments and we're seeing a, uh, improved outcome, we would want to make additional investment and not just as a cost-cutting measure. Um, and conversely, if we have been making investments and, and it's not producing the results we anticipated, then we can have the conversations about the ongoing continued support of, of whatever that might be. Um, and connected to that is what is the communication plan for sharing, uh, the budget out with the public and to gather feedback in a meaningful way?
This year has been one of those years where we, we're gonna be tight to finish and is similarly to last year where we're tight to finish. And, um, I know that's unfortunate. We can do some budget hearings and, and have some conversations. It, it should be relevant, meaningful data that we're presenting, uh, or we could do listening sessions to hear what people are saying. I, I'm certainly open to what the expectations are of the board, um, but we're, we're gonna be struggling to finish, quite frankly.
We can talk about priorities and, um, you know, have, um, communities that, you know, to get input from the community about, you know, what are the services, um, that they most, um, you know, that they, that they value the most. The thing that you'll find in those meetings, and I know you, you, you guys have hosted those before, is that it's not easy to give up on any of them. But, um, we can go, you know, we can provide some priorities for the, for the public.
Yeah, and we have done, um, we do have an open, uh, question session on our budget webpage where, you know, people have posted information or asked questions of us or, you know, commented on our budget. So we do have some method of feedback. It's not as robust as I'm sure you're looking for.
I would be interested. It seems to me that while you're busy head down working on the budget, that we have other departments in the organization that could be thinking about how to engage the public so that it doesn't feel like, I, I would hope that we don't just hold a couple of public hearings and check the box that we've asked for input on the budget regardless of how challenging this year's may be in the short turnaround. Um, for instance, I'm interested, we've certainly heard from the teachers' perspective on salary. I wanna hear their perspective on other things that are helping kids so that we can take that into consideration, and I don't currently see a mechanism in place by which we can inject their input on what's helping them in the classroom and what's not helping them in the classroom. So those are the sorts of things that I would be interested in seeing as part of this budget
I guess I would like to just make one final comment. The process that I've seen work the best is, is to prepare a budget and have the, the public look at that and see and comment on that budget that is prepared rather than getting what I call just lots of noise sometimes around. And there, I think we will get meaningful comment if there's something they really can see and react to. And I, I understand with the legislature going home late and that we only have that window, which is very short, and this is not a small organization, but I would suggest that we get the prepared budget and then have, I know we've done these, like, we could go out to, you know, one of the high schools and have a, here's, here's a budget, here's a presentation, here's a reaction, what do you think? And I think that, and, in, in my ears in this, in three or four different places, that has been the best because people then really have something they can see and, and react to and understand how everything comes together in that mysterious thing called a budget. So I would ask that, that be one of the things that Rosalyn gets that budget put together, at least even in a framework that shows, okay, we're putting this much into academic achievement with the evidence that should be fairly easily to pull together, looking at how we are. And I think at some point we need to probably, after we get through this mess, take a look at how we're measuring our impacts and, you know, as we moving forward, there's a whole lot of fine tuning, but right now our bottom line is to get that budget put together and then take a look at where we are for this year and next year, but to have an actual document someone can react to. And just in my experience, that has been very helpful. And that's what we do at the state level, the legislature gets a budget and that's why we all go down and testify what we don't like and what we do like, and, um, they take that into consideration. I think that's a way to, um, probably organize that in a, uh, in a manner where we can get more meaningful input. So I, I agree with what you're asking for definitely, but I'm, you know, I didn't get this great here for anything, so to offer a little suggestion. Rosalyn, does that make sense to you?
Yes, I understand.
So I actually like-
It may be preparation.
I like Josh's idea though about, uh, you know, the users, you know, in the buildings and what works and what doesn't work.
Well, they can do that too. They'll have that opportunity to comment too, and I'm sure they will, and, but this, I'm just saying as a way, a procedural way to not have, um, a lot of information, perhaps not relevant to our strategic plan, not relevant to what we are doing, but to really say, okay, this is where we are, this is what we're proposing, what do you think? And I think that-
It's also gonna have to be, and I think it's, uh, it's especially important and it'll be good information for nineteen, for, are we gonna go into seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen twenty? Because, um, the bottom line is we're not gonna have a lot of discretion in this year. We're backed up a wall and we don't even know what we're gonna have. And so, you know, it's hard to present a bu- a budget to the public and say, "Here it is," and, you know, and not have any options. You know, we don't have any other places to look, but what we can use it for is tell you, 'cause, you know, the next year, if we end up cutting twenty-one million dollars, then we're gonna have to know what the public values and what's having an impact and what they wanna keep. And, you know, and, uh, you know, what, you know, what steps to the top, to the front of the line, what steps to the back? And so it's a good procedure to go forward as we look at, you know, um, a budget that's gonna be very painful the following year. So I think we can use it to kinda polish off this year and say, "This is what we're in, this is what it looks like," and let us know, you know, what you think we should do in nineteen twenty.
Okay, um, thank you, Rosalyn. I, my, uh, heart is with you as you go through this.
It's my pleasure.
Appreciate all your hard work. All right, board comments and reports. Um, Director Leon, do you have any, I'll start with you. Do you have any board comments or reports?
So, um, just, uh, this discussion of getting the feedback from the, the users, so, I mean, there's lots of people involved in education, right? So let's make sure we get the parental feedback, somehow student feedback. I really want a lot of teacher feedback on what, uh, programs, um, are working with regard to continuing those programs and, and what has maybe worked in the past but isn't working anymore and where, um, funds can be cut, or, or programs can be cut to make more funds available for, um, maybe new programs, uh, maybe increasing salaries for teachers and peer educators too, when we can. Um, so, um, I'm learning this process, so I'd like to hear that feedback, um, as frequently as we can.
Director Hines?
No report tonight.
Great. Director Wensky?
No report.
Great, I have none either. Um, announcements of future board meetings?
Vice President Beal-
Oh, I'm sorry, our-
I have nothing to report.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I've been busy studying all summer. The last few weeks.
Sleeping.
Sleeping, yeah, no. Announcement of future board meetings, Thursday, July twelfth, two thousand eighteen, six P.M., regular business meeting. Um, Thursday, August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, six P.M., regular business meeting. It is not on our agenda, but the superintendent has requested that we adjourn to a closed session not to exceed twenty minutes to discuss certain items. And I would move that we adjourn to that closed session, uh, or, uh, session not to, a timeframe not to exceed twenty minutes. Thank you.[1714.64]